Good evening. The hour having arrived and the quorum being present, I declare this April 2nd, 2019 meeting of the Norwood Board of Selectmen officially in session. We will begin tonight's meeting as we always do with the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silent prayer or reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As is customary on our first April meeting in any year, we will begin with the question of reorganization, and to do that, I turn the meeting over to Christina Malvehill.
Are there any nominations for chairman? Ms. Selectman Pascoe?
I'd like to nominate Selectman Hall Bishop. Second.
Thank you. And any other nominations? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor of...
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. By unanimous vote, Selectman Bishop is elected chairman. Congratulations.
All right. Let's go, chief. Talk a little yourself.
You know that Tom Maloney guy?
Just a moment of privilege, if I may. I want to thank my predecessor, Selectman Maloney, for his work over the course of this last year. He's attended a lot of meetings and functions on behalf of this board, and I want to thank him for all the hard work he's done. It's been a very difficult year, and we have a lot of work yet to be done ahead of us. So I just want to take this quick opportunity to thank him. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My pleasure.
Second, honor of business, the appointment of the town clerk. Any nominations for town clerk?
Clerk of the Board.
Clerk, I'm sorry, Clerk of the Board.
Christina Malvehill? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Christina Malvehill is now the clerk of the board again. Next is the appointment of the chairman of the Board of designated designate designee and alternate designate on the MBTA Advisory Board. That would be Paul Halakiotis as designate, and Mr. Bernie Cooper as the second designate. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. And that concludes our business as far as reorganization. This evening, we have three appointments, the first being Chief William Brooks of the Norwood Police Department, giving a monthly report, followed by Chief George Maurice of the Fire Department, giving his monthly report, and at 7:30, we have a meeting with Mr. Seth Pickering of the Department of Energy Resources Green Committees, I'm sorry, Green Communities Division. So I'll start with Chief Brooks, if I could. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to start off by congratulating Mr. Hajar with election support, and I don't want to let the moment pass without also acknowledging Helen Donnie, who for her years of service, and particularly for her strong support of the police department, every month when I came up here, it was clear to me that she understood and appreciated the community policing approach that our department has taken, and I appreciate her years of support to the Norwood Police Department. So as far as our business at the department over the last month or so, excuse me, Officer Terry Conley has notified us of his impending retirement. He'll actually retire this week. Officer Conley has served as a member of the Norwood Police Department for 30 years, and also has some military service prior to that, so we obviously wish Officer Conley best, a very best in his retirement. As far as hiring goes, we had an officer begin the Transit Police Academy a week ago yesterday, and we have two candidates going to a new police academy that's opened at the Borne, at the Otis Air Force Base in Borne, and those candidates will replace Officer Cordero, who, as you know, left the department last month, and then Officer Conley's retirement, which I just mentioned. So we have, we have three candidates in the queue, and in keeping with that, as I've mentioned to you before, the Norwood Police Department entrance exam will be given on April 20th. People can still sign up, they just need to go to the Norwood Police Department website. It's very clear there how you click on and register for the, for the exam that'll be given at Norwood High School. When people go by the high school that morning, they'll see a lot of activity, candidates, and they'll see our field training officers walking the crowds, introducing themselves, and talking to the candidates. So that's April 20th. This morning, I had the pleasure of welcoming about 400 police officers from around the state to conferences taking place at the Sheraton Four Points. This is the annual conference of the Massachusetts Juvenile Police Officers Association. As you know, the Sheraton Four Points host three major law enforcement conferences every year. This is the first of the season. Next month, there'll be about 600 officers from across the country that will attend a conference on cybercrime, and then in September, there'll be a three-day conference of Massachusetts Police Chiefs, and we usually get about 300 at that conference. But this morning was the Juvenile Police Officers Conference. We are about halfway through our Citizen Police Academy. Last night, the residents who were attending were treated to a class on crime scene. We actually set up mock crime scenes around the building. They had to go and process the evidence and examine the scene, and come up with a theory, and then process, process the scenes and so forth, so from everything I heard, they enjoyed that. We ran two sessions of our Rape Aggression Defense Course, which is a self-defense course for women. Both were held at Norwood High School. The first was aimed at female high school students, and the second group was female faculty members. So our Rape Aggression Defense staff ran those, ran those two sessions, and again, I understand that they were very well received. We have begun a pedestrian safety grant, which I think I might have mentioned to you last month, where we have received some federal highway funding that comes to us through the State Highway Safety Division. Our officers are out sometimes alone, sometimes in pairs. It's actually going on right as we speak now. I was just speaking to Officer Baguma, who's in the uptown area, watching for pedestrians using, using unsafe practices, and also motorists that are failing to stop for pedestrians in crosswalks. So we will, we'll be running that enforcement now for the next few months, and people will see some police activity in those areas that have dense pedestrian traffic. Coincidentally, we did have a pedestrian struck by a car a couple of weeks ago on a Friday night. A gentleman was crossing the street, Washington Street, in the vicinity of Day Street. He was struck by a pickup truck traveling southbound. That man was very seriously injured. He is alive, but he's undergone a number of surgeries. We arrested the operator of the truck for OUI second offense and for negligent operation of the motor vehicle. And then lastly, it was my, and this is something that I've done, I won't say now four or five times since I've been chief, is that I met with the Brazilian community. I did that by going to their church, Word of Life Church, which is on Route 1A, just over the line into Walpole, that it was primarily a Norwood audience. I bring with me Officer Diego Silva, who's Brazilian-born and fluent in Portuguese, and following the Sunday service, I got up, and I just wanted to talk to them about all that's going on in the country, and then what they can expect in Norwood as far as being from a foreign land and living here. The specific points I made, first and foremost, is that our job as the police is to protect everyone who's here now, regardless of how they arrived here, and that their safety is our paramount concern, that the police do not enforce immigration law. We talked a little bit about what detainers are and how they work, or really how they don't work in Massachusetts, a little bit about motor vehicle law, about people visiting the country from a foreign country who can operate legally on a passport and their home country license, what countries in South America that, that covered, and that sort of thing. We actually, the session went for about a half of an hour. There were a couple of hundred people there. It was, it was very well received. They wanted to take pictures with us afterwards, and they had cake, and we were able to chat. But I think that's an important thing that we do. I want everybody to understand that, again, like I said, our primary mission is the protection of the public, and we protect all people who are here, regardless of any type of status or how, how they arrive. That was well received. So, as I said, we do that periodically, and my thanks to Officer Silva, who was an enormous help, because some of the, some of the audience, of course, did not speak English, so it was helpful to have him with me to translate. But that's the essence of my report. That's what's happening over the last month, and I'm happy to answer any questions in my head.
Thank you, Chief. Questions from the board?
Thank you, Chief. Just a question on that death, was speeding an issue at all?
The pedestrian accident? We don't believe so, no.
We don't believe so, okay. Second, going through your report, I love the outreach, and you talked about it, but it's great. I think the public definitely needs to know about that. I mean, you read Across America, that your folks did at the Old Ham in the Bolsh, that, that's great. The rape aggression defense that you talked about, the Citizens Police Academy, as well as the discussion with the Brazilian community, that's all great outreach, and if you're doing that type of stuff every month, I think that, that's awesome. That helps with the bonding to the younger people and to the other members of the community that make you more friendly appearance-wise. The second thing I noted in the report was the 346 hours of training. I think that's great. Love to see that ongoing, so kudos to you and your team for performing those number of hours of training, and I look forward to seeing it. Thank you very much.
Well, I thank you, thank you for your comments. We, we do pay a lot of attention to our training, as I know the Norwood Fire Department does too. That's an important part of what we do. And your comments about Read Across America, and of course, you maybe have seen on social media that we did a little bit differently this year, is that with the help of, I think I mentioned this before, Sue Bartlett, right here from Town Hall, from the IT Department, her idea that we should actually bring our own children's book, and she helped us put together with photos and captions a 36-page book about the Norwood Police Department. So when we went to the classrooms to read, the officers actually brought a book about the Norwood Police Department, and, and we got some very nice notes back from the classrooms. The kids really enjoyed it. When the officers were finished reading the book, we left them in the classrooms so that they could, so that they could have it. And I got a very nice note from a first-grade class that wanted me to know that Officer Hoyle was an excellent reader, which she is, and the teacher, there's pictures of officers, Austin Glazer and Brian Sidroni in the book, and that the teacher had had them in class and remembered when they were, as a letter said, remembered them when they were little like us, which I, which I thought was cute. So that was enjoyable, and we were reprinting that book, and you'll see more of that. But thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Hajar. Anything else from the board? Mr. Maloney, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, just regarding the Rape Aggression Defense training classes, how many, how many women attended?
I don't know the numbers. Our classes have gone anywhere from smaller classes, which run around 10, and we've had it up to 25.
Oh, okay.
We don't get much larger than that, because a lot of it is hands-on.
Yep.
It's 12 hours. It's a, it's done on a national structure, so essentially, we do three nights of four hours per night.
Okay.
And it starts with prevention and safe practices, and then a little bit of self-defense, and then it culminates on the last night, where our officers actually dress in red, heavily padded suits, and, and kind of go at it with the women who are attending the course, and let them actually try out some, some of what they've learned.
Okay. I mean, it sounds like with numbers like that, though, at least it's pretty well, a pretty well-publicized course, so...
They're pretty well-publicized, yeah, and the attendance does fluctuate, depending on what the group is. We've found that, like with any of these programs, Citizen Police Academy, Rape Aggression Defense, the first time we run it, the numbers are a little bit lower, and then we run a second time and a third time, and those numbers escalate as, as word kind of circles.
Just regarding your visit with the Word of Life Church, it was interesting to me, you talked about, a little bit about what I think you're alluding to, immigration-type issues.
Yes.
Do we, are you, are you finding that people from, from other cultures are fearful that in interacting with a local police force, they're leaving themselves open to, to prosecution or persecution from the federal, from federal levels of authority?
Sometimes they're afraid of immigration, and sometimes they're afraid of the police. And, and the whole thrust of my meeting with them is to try to take some of that away. And as I explained to them, not only our, our approach to this and what our, what our mission is, but we don't enforce immigration law. And I've said to them, you could be halfway through a traffic stop and yell out the window to the officer, I'm in the country illegally, and the officer would say, okay, I'll, I'll be right there, finish the ticket and give you the ticket. We don't, if we know that somebody is in the country undocumented, and we meet them on a traffic stop, it has no bearing. If people are victims or witnesses, that, that has no bearing.
What obligations do local officers, if any, face and have to...
No, no obligation, quite frankly, and very little authority.
Okay.
So, you know, you've heard a little bit about immigration detainers.
Uh huh.
The way an immigration detainer works literally is that if we arrest somebody for committing a crime in Norwood, and they are fingerprinted, those fingerprints travel electronically through a federal system, which includes immigration and custom enforcement, and if that person has been arrested and convicted for serious crime in the past, then immigration is notified. They look at that, and if they choose to file a detainer, they notify us.
Okay.
The Supreme Judicial Court, however, has ruled that local law enforcement and sheriffs are powerless in Massachusetts to enforce those. So us being served with a detainer really has no impact.
So, so somebody who has been convicted of a serious crime, you might be obliged to let that person go?
We would be obliged to let that person go. That person is admitted to bail in the same way that any other prisoner is, which I think is a problem, because this only really happens after we've already arrested a person for serious crime, and they've been fingerprinted, and immigration finds that there are serious crimes in their background, and they're in the country illegally. That's the only people that it applies to. But right now, we're powerless to, to enforce that. And quite frankly, some of the, without getting into it too deeply, some of that, some of that complexity is why you're, you're seeing a little bit of immigration sometimes and going back and re-arresting people who have been previously arrested by the police, because we, we don't have the authority as a result of the Cuomo versus Lund decision by the SGC about a year and a half ago. We don't have the authority to enforce detainers. So my, you know, my point really is that, and even if that were to be fixed, even if that were to be fixed, that you would have to have committed a crime in Norwood and get arrested and be fingerprinted, have immigration notified, and have a serious crime in your background, and have them send us a detainer before we could take action. But right now, we can, we can take no action. So it's all really about, and you know invariably, we hear about somebody in that community who has either been the victim of domestic violence and was afraid to come forward, or was aware of some, of some conduct that should have been reported to the police, and they held back on that, and we don't, we don't want that. We don't want anybody to be abused or be hurt, to be the victim of a crime. We want them to feel comfortable approaching the police. We have cards that were put in some of the shops, particularly in South Norwood, that talks about ways to contact the police, and that you can contact the police, and they're in English on one side and Portuguese on the other. And it's our hope that, that people feel faith and confidence in us, and that we have good relationships with everyone who's here.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Chief, I want to thank you and the entire department for the outreach, not only to the Brazilian community, but to the schoolchildren. They look upon the police department in a different light now, not as a quasi-military organization that they should be afraid of. They step forward now, and they feel like they can go up and talk to a police officer. Again, whether it's a young child in school, or somebody in the Brazilian community, or any foreign community for that matter, so I thank you for that. One quick question, if you know the answer. The House was supposed to take up, or the State Senate was supposed to take up a bill on distracted driving, cell phone usage up to the year. This week, I believe. Do you know how that turned out, if you do?
Oh, I've not heard how that turned out.
I have not either, that's kind of...
You know, the state of the law, and I get asked about this sometimes, time to time, the state of the law in Massachusetts is you can actually, you can make calls, you can work your navigation, you just can't answer text messages, check Facebook or email. So it's difficult for us to tell exactly what you're doing, and the chief, and the governor's goal, of course, is to have it entirely hands-free. You'd mount your phone in the car, use Siri to trigger calls, entirely hands-free. It'd be easier for us, and I think probably safer. I know he's committed to that, but I've not heard how the Senate made up with that.
Well, I think he's on the right track. It's, it's got to stop.
I agree with you.
With that said, anything else from the board? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report, and have a good night. Now, next up will be Chief Maurice from the Fire Department. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening.
You can start off at any time.
Thank you. I would like to start off by saying congratulations to Selectman Maloney on his reelection, and congratulations to Selectman Hajar on becoming a Selectman. That's great.
Thank you, Chief.
I just wanted to start with, in case the public in Norwood hit, driven by Walpole Street in the Hannaford Market area, on Sunday, there was a motor vehicle accident, a single-car accident where the car was flipped over on its side. Initially, we responded in the ambulance and the front engine, but due to the situation where a car on its side is unstable, they called for the ladder truck. In our ladder truck, we have what are called stabilizer bars, and Captain Bent arrived on scene. They use the stabilizer bars to actually secure the vehicle from rocking side to side, which they did, and then they were able to extricate the driver through the windshield of the vehicle. The driver was not critically injured, was transported to Norwood Hospital, so they were okay, just to let the public know that in case they had come across the accident.
Thank you for that.
I would also like the public to know that we are well into burning season. Right now, we did have some recent dry weather, which caused a brush fire today on Allen Road. Unfortunately, the, the fire got a little bit out of control and started to encroach on a couple homes there, but the responding apparatus were able to extinguish the fire. So I just want to go over a few quick items on that for the public. They can come down to the Fire Department at any time and receive a burning permit. The permit is free, but we do have some rules that go along with that. It should be a minimum of 75 feet from the building. Call the Fire Department before you start. The times to burn are from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and the individuals should call the Mass DEP, Department of Environmental Protection. Now, they want to make sure that the air quality is acceptable before people burn any type of product. So that's something that is fairly new, and people can burn brush, cane, fruit tree prunings, things of that nature, but we would not, and I know, Mr. Howard, I think maybe before, we talked about wet leaves or leaves, that we, they cannot be burned at all. So, but any questions on that, we have free information down at the Fire Department. Of course, an adult should be present, some type of water supply, whether it's a garden hose or a pressurized water can, shovels and rakes, and April is the worst month of brush fires, because things tend to be, even though you think of April showers, for some reason, it's been drier lately, and hopefully, we'll get some rain tonight. The Norwood Fire Department over the past month responded to two mutual aid fires, both in Walpole. One was, the first one was during the day, during a high wind day. Dead tree fell down and took out the power lines to a home. It actually took out the neutral wire, which caused a flow of electricity to still go into the house, started a fire in the basement. Walpole Fire responded, but needed a little assistance on that. We sent an engine company over and a chief officer, myself. The other fire was last week. You may have seen it on the news, early in the morning, a home close to the agricultural school had, also had a fire in the basement. It was caused by a home marijuana grow operation that had overheated. I know that's why it was on the news, but we, we lent assistance on overhaul there, and again, it was an engine company and a chief officer, myself. At the department itself, and I know, I had mentioned a few meetings ago, that I had appointed a new IT individual at the department, Jeff Shockley, and firefighter Shockley has been very aggressive in trying to basically work with the IT department at the Town Hall and discern what we have for computer systems and what they do. One thing that we found that we have what's called a CAD, a computer aided dispatch, that does not work in conjunction with the actual documentation software that we have at the department. So firefighter Shockley, along with our two EMS coordinators, contacted a company who sent a representative, and basically, that representative has a new type of software that's going to enable us to have those two different systems communicate with each other. It'll be a great benefit to the department in the sense that the, the run reports or the patient care reports will be much easier for all the EMTs and the paramedics, and it will go, the documentation will be much faster. What the software does, it will take the information input by the dispatchers on the CAD, and it pushes it into the computers on the ambulance, so runtimes, address, any other information like that will get pushed to those computers on the ambulances, and that'll make the time for the EMTs and paramedics much less when they have to fill out that report after. So we're moving forward with our IT in the department, and I think it's going to be a great feature for us on a very small investment. I'd like to mention that Lieutenant Joe Mon, and I know I had mentioned this before, was back from an overseas tour in the US Army, and Lieutenant Mon will be starting his first shift back on the department next week, which is Wednesday, April 10th. I know you know him, Selectman Chairman Bishop, because he was with the police department for a while before he came over. We will be having a small ceremony for him roughly at 8:30, just to welcome him back.
Would you let us know about that, so any board member can attend?
I will.
Thank you.
And hopefully, his father will be there and be able to pin his lieutenant's badge on him. And second to last, 14 members of the Fire Department this past weekend volunteered their time, and they did what was called the Fight for Air Steer Climb. It was held in Boston, and it's a fundraiser for the American Lung Association, and basically, what the, it happened to be males on the department that did it, but the guys had their full turnout gear on, and they also wore their SCBA, which is the Self-Containued Breathing Apparatus, our air packs, and they climbed 41 stairs, flights of stairs, to raise money for this cause. So I just wanted to mention them and thank them for volunteering their time. They did a great job doing that.
I think we're thankful for that also. There was a picture, I believe, on social media, whether it be Instagram or Facebook.
There was.
With Lieutenant Bent?
Captain Bent.
Captain Bent, I'm sorry.
Yes. And hats off to Kevin Morrissey. He topped all 14, though I heard there's a few challenges that are already speaking for next year that they're going to win it, so...
There's always next year.
Right. And the last thing I wanted to mention was someone who was near and dear to my heart when I got on the Fire Department was Deputy Mike Gabley. He had passed away recently, and we had services for him. When I got on 30 years ago, Mike was my captain. He was very good to me. He was the nicest guy, always a gentleman. Never heard a bad word about him from anybody on the department or within the town. He was just very well-respected. And just a quick story about him, another older retired member was telling me as we drove to St. Catherine's that they were in a very, very hot fire, and Mike Gabley took the line by himself, and he actually went after the fire, and he was holding the fire basically back while two other members went behind him and were able to rescue an individual and get them back out. And this retired member who was telling me the story choked up about it, because just the, the sacrifice that he put himself in that position to rescue someone in Norwood, that, that was just the type of person Mike Gabley was, so I just wanted to mention that, and again, condolences to his family.
Thank you for that. He was a very good man on so many different levels. That's only one of the levels. He was good all around. I think he's going to be sadly missed. Thank you, Chief.
And that's it.
That's it. Any questions from the board? Mr. Hajar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, thanks for the conference report. I'm sure I'll get used to it. On page two, where you list the, the expenses related to overtime recall, then substitution, a couple of things. Is it possible for you, to the right of the balance column, to show what the previous monthly amounts were, so there's some context to your current numbers?
Sure.
Huh? Well, listing each month for...
Does it have the month above it, the previous month is...
Right, so I was looking for the previous fiscal year numbers by month, just to the right, so we can compare January to January, and February to February. Just, in my mind, it gives us context of whether the month that you're reporting is higher or lower than the previous month. And then the other thing, if, if a month is really out of, out of whack, a comment or two on why it was, I mean, were there three people that were injured, and that's why you had to have...
Were you speaking to a specific month?
Um, no, I'll leave it up to you to decide what's an abnormal month or not, but like if I look at September of 18, where it's $15,000 on the overtime recall, it's pretty much higher than everybody else. I'm sure there was a reason for it, and we'd be glad to know.
Well, I can comment on the month of September. It was my first month as chief, but we had the fire here on Washington Street. That was a big contributing factor, where we had to, I went to a second alarm, so we had to call quite a few members in for that. had to call quite a few members in for that. Also, in conjunction with that, is we did have a member who's been out injured for over a year. He was there. We also had Lieutenant Mon, who was overseas with the military. So all those factors together will combine to have a month that increases over another one.
Trust me, I'm not questioning the number. I just, sometimes things get lost in translation, and if there's a comment that says that's why that number is higher than you had exactly what you just said on here, it just alleviates the question.
Okay.
The second is, when you talk about the ALS numbers?
Yes.
Is the, in the first part of it, where you say deposits for the month of February, you're talking about, you mean through the month of February, of February 19?
Correct.
Right?
There may be some lag, because with the new company that we have doing our billing, they don't get the information to us exactly right away, so we're actually a little bit behind with that. We try to provide the most accurate numbers.
I understand. I was just trying to say that the word should be through the month of February, not for the month of February, right?
Okay.
No, I just want to make sure that you're talking about the current year-to-date number.
Correct.
Okay, that's right. Then on the issue about the, I mean, not permits, but the work that you folks did through on inspections. You folks are notified by the building department when the permit is issued. I know that you comment on plans before the permit is actually issued, but once it's issued, are you then notified so that you know it's actually, work is actually going to be done?
I think in some instances. I do not know if it's in all instances. I know for certain individuals, it depends on what's happening, that they have to come into the fire department for that permit.
Right.
It may be the fire prevention officer as opposed to the deputy chief who looks at plans. So say if there's a home transaction or in addition to a home, they have to come in and actually get a permit from the fire prevention officer as opposed to the deputy chief who is going through blueprints and looking at if the building is up to code as to what they're going to be building.
Okay, so I didn't know if that's a loophole, and maybe some type of communication to ensure that the fire department is notified of all building permits, at least after the fact, because they can approve things, but if the homeowner or business backs out and says, "I'm not going to go through with it," he wouldn't necessarily know. And if they do get it, he would know that they're actually going to do it.
Yeah, the building commissioner's office does keep them in the loop if they think it requires a fire permit, but it's also on the contractor to be responsible to get whatever permits they're legally required to get. So what you find in most situations like that is good contractors are notifying everyone and going through the proper permit, and then people who are trying to sneak by are trying to sneak by as many permits as they can.
Okay. Next, on the fees that, I know that you talked about the quarterly inspections that were conducted, and you list a whole series of facilities, which is great. Fees charged for that, is that something that's been looked at to ensure that we're pretty current to our comparable towns, or is that something that probably needs to be done?
We could do that. I've never done that, comparing it to other towns to see where we fall, if we're high or lower, or the same. I don't know if anything over the past number of years wasn't involved in that part of the department to see if, you know, it's stayed the same the past number of years, or it's increased.
It was looked at, not currently, as maybe it was a good idea, but the last time it was looked at, they did raise a number of the fees, and we're actually, we're at the high end of the area. So I don't know where we stand today. Might be good to look at it again, but...
I know the one thing that we did do, not in relation to building, but was the ambulance fees.
Right, I remember that discussion.
We did do a study on that and increased those fees.
Thank you. And the last thing is, on the training, again, like Chief Brooks's report, you show a great amount of training, which is great. The other thing I'd like to see is, can you show the, I know you're listing it by group, but can we actually have numbers that say, that say the number of people that have been trained and the number of hours? Just so, again...
Sir, the challenge that, where it's different with the police, we usually, when we train a police officer, that officer is assigned to go to that training for that period of time, and we know about it. A lot of the fire training is done, what we do at the station sometimes is tough to quantify, because it's in-house training while all 16 guys or gals are there. So we can probably look at something different, but it's just, it works a little bit different than the...
It just would help me to understand the hours, because he's got a lot of training here, which is great. I love to see the training, but without knowing how many hours, I don't know how effective we're being, if it's, you know, 25 hours or 250 hours for that month.
We do keep track of that. We have paperwork that the captains, the ship commanders, fill out after a training.
Okay.
And they also list the hours, but usually, it's done by month. So I think that would be fine for this.
Yep, that's fine.
The one thing to understand, though, and it's something I've mentioned before, that when we do do training, unfortunately, we are a very busy department, so trucks are constantly being called in and out while we're doing an evolution. It could be one of the ambulances, it could be the front engine. So some, you know, I can give you numbers, but will they be, you know, if someone left for an hour and then back, that it will not reflect that?
Okay, that's fine. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Plasko?
Thank you. Chief, I had one on the ambulance fees as well. I think, I think only one. The billing back and forth for mutual aid. Is that done between the departments, or is that done by the billing agency as well?
Between the departments.
So we seem to be paying out a lot more than we're taking in?
Well, we're busier, so I think we're calling for other towns to come and...
So that is a collection problem, that, or going problem, that's an actual use that we aren't going into the other communities as often as they're coming here?
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Plasko?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Real quick, CPR, do we have police fire CPR class in the working?
Not currently, to my knowledge. We do have an individual, Patrick McDonough, who does teach CPR with the grant that we had received from Mr. Valara from Norwood Urgent Care. We just purchased all new CPR training equipment and updated the software. So Patrick is available to do that on almost as if a subcontractor-type basis. We did recently the department-sponsored training for the workers here in Town Hall and other departments within the town.
Well, I know previously, police and fire people would do public ones, I think up the senior center, as it happened, not the seniors necessarily, anybody in the town up to a limit. But those were very well received previously.
Now, are you saying that we should sponsor that ourselves, or would you prefer that the individuals coming?
No, like I say, if we could do that, you know, like we did at No Cost previously, and it was very well received, and to get 15 to 20 people out there, you know, fully trained at one shot is wonderful.
I know that with the classes they did teach, there is a criteria, though, from the American Heart Association, that it's not just one individual that teaches the class.
Right.
That you have to have one instructor per, I believe it was six people in the class.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It was four or five folks that were there from both departments.
So we would have to call, you know, have a call back and pay those individuals to teach that class then, to provide that service for everybody?
Right, just a thought. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Chief, just getting back to the ambulance thing, just want to make sure I have it clarified. We're talking about collections for the month of February 2019, 116,000 and change. Down below, we have something that says deposits for the month of February 2019, 944,000. That's where we should, we want to have through, right? Yeah, so...
Correct, reflect the total.
And you're using, you're using deposits, because it's collections plus refunds plus billing collection cost, which brings you to deposits. So deposits is like total revenue?
Yes.
Year-to-date. Okay, thank you. And then down below, we have net revenue balanced to the town through February 2019. Okay, very good. Happy to see the ambitious schedule with firefighter Chisholm, training schedule on EMS continuing education. I think that's great. He was here a couple weeks ago, did a great presentation to the piece of equipment that you have, so...
Yes.
That's great. Happy to, and happy that we're putting to good use Dr. Valera's donation to us, so...
And that will continue.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Plasko. Anything else from the board?
Thank you.
Chief, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Next meeting is running a little bit late, so if Mr. Pickering would like to step up. We're going to meet with Seth Pickering of the Department of Energy Resources with the Commonwealth regarding the green community projects. Mr. Pickering, it's all yours.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you very much for having me. Tony, Paul, it's nice to see you as well. Paul and I worked together a number of years ago in Marshfield, so it's good to see familiar face. My presentation, Tony, is...
It's up on the screen in just a moment.
Over here?
Yeah.
Okay.
For those at home, we're just going to set up a slide presentation. It'll just take a moment to get it up and running.
Here you go.
Just letting you know when you want the slide changed, they'll be here.
Okay, great, all right. So as I said, thank you very much for having me. My name is Seth Pickering. I am the Southeast Regional Coordinator for the Green Communities Division of the Department of Energy Resources. That's quite a mouthful. My director is here as well, Nick Connors. He's the director of the division. So we're going to give you a quick overview of the Green Communities program and see if we can do business with Norwood. Can we go to the next slide, please? So the Green Communities Division is the energy resource for every municipality here in Massachusetts. All 351, whether you're a green community or not, there are resources that are available from us. We've interacted with Norwood Municipal Light on one of our grants to do your LED streetlights here in town, and we've had contact with Norwood Light on a couple of other issues as well that will be very helpful if the town decides to move forward with Green Communities designation. Next slide, please. So the Green Communities Division has been designating towns since 2010. There are currently 240 out of the 351 municipalities in the Commonwealth that are designated Green Communities. And so we are hoping that in this next year, we may have as many as 15 to 25, anywhere in that range, in addition to this 240. Next slide, please. So just as background, the Green Communities Division was created by the Green Communities Act of 2008. We are funded up to $20 million per year for grants for qualifying communities, so that would be communities that are existing Green Communities or ones that are being designated. And our grants fund primarily energy efficiency projects in the cities and towns that we are, that we are in. Next slide, please. To date, we have granted over $105 million worth of grants. Our calculated avoided cost to towns per year is about $10 million from energy savings. We've completed over 270 grants. That number probably needs to be updated a little bit. And we are continuing to do even more in the future. We just designated 30 new Green Communities in December, and we just had 90 existing Green Communities apply for what are called competitive grants as well. Next slide, please. So we asked the town to do five different things to become designated. We'll go over those in a minute. Once you're designated, your initial designation grant is done through a formula. It's a minimum grant of $125,000 with adders for the town population in your per capita income. The estimate for Norwood is your initial designation grant would be somewhere around Once your initial designation grant is fully complete, all the work is done, all the bills have been paid, and the final inspection has been done, the town can be eligible for up to $250,000 in what are called competitive grants every grant cycle thereafter. It can be as often as every single year. So it's not a one, it's not a one-time thing.
It's 250 on top of the 190, is that what you're saying? I'm sorry.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
So next slide, please.
Question if I might, on the grants?
Yep.
Is that an outright grant, or we qualify for more after we do paperwork, or do we have to spend the money and get reimbursed? Do we have to appropriate the money upfront for...
Yeah, so the disbursements work like this. The first 25% of your grant, we give to you, and then based on reporting and record-keeping, we disburse 50% when you hit certain milestones. And then when all the work is done, all the invoicing and payment is done in the final inspections, then we reimburse the final 25%.
Thank you.
Just if I could, Mr. Chairman, that initial $190,000 grant, that can go for anything that ends up in our energy reduction plan. So what we do as part of the process is we come up with an energy reduction plan. We have complete discretion to spend that $190,000 on the items in that energy reduction plan.
Can you give us an example of that?
LED lights at the library. If we have that in our plan, we have our projected savings, we get that grant, and it's a $110,000 project, you can go right ahead with it.
And they assisted ourselves in the light department on the town-wide LED program. And that is saving us money, correct, Mr. Collins?
Thank you.
Thank you. Continue, sir. Thank you.
Sure, thanks. So the next slide just shows you a number of different cities and towns not too far away that are in the program and the types of grants that they've been awarded in terms of the amounts. So in particular, recently, Canton was just designated in 2017, who's a neighbor of yours. They've just applied for a competitive grant as well, so they've completed all the projects that were in that initial grant of $158,000 and change. Let's see, who else? Plainville, who's nearby, Stoughton as well. Stoughton has completed their initial grant, and they just applied for a competitive grant as well. So as you can see, it's not a one-time thing moving forward into the future, and especially in a town like this, where you have pretty good-sized infrastructure between your town buildings and your schools, this can, this can work out quite well.
So I was just, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I just, so I understand here, we get a designation grant by virtue of the fact that we joined the program.
Correct.
Okay, is that, are we talking about an annual grant?
No, that's a, so you join the program, and you get a designation grant at one time of $190,000, and then you're eligible to apply for up to a quarter of a million dollars each in the next five years.
In competitive grants or designation?
In competitive grants.
Okay, so the only thing we get for joining the program, in this case, would be $190,000?
That would be your initial designation grant, that's correct.
Everything else is competitive?
Correct.
That's correct. Thank you.
Next slide, please. So to become designated, we ask the towns to do five different things. We call them five criteria. The first one is the adoption of ads of right citing for a couple of different options, including renewable or alternative generation. And Paul, if I'm not wrong, you guys have already satisfied this requirement in Norwood?
Yes, we can check that box.
Yep. So you've already fulfilled criteria one. Because you've fulfilled criteria two, you in all likelihood have already met criteria two, one, pardon me. So if you've already met criteria one, you in all likelihood met criteria two as well, which means that you have what we call expedited permitting for any project that would be subject to the criteria one requirement. And it's only, the requirement is that any local permitting be done within 365 days of application. So it looks like Norwood has already met two of the five criteria. The third one is the development of the energy reduction plan that Tony was talking about. In that, with the assistance from your local utilities, so in your case, it's going to be the gas company, through what's effectively the Mass Safe Program for cities and towns, we can help get audits done here in town to the different, to the different buildings and identify what the town's baseline is in a fiscal year, and then come up with a plan over the next five years after that baseline year to try and reduce that energy usage by 20%. Okay?
Questions, Mr. Chairman? Is your cost for that, or is that done just as part of the program?
So the audits can be done at no cost to the town through, possibly through the natural gas company. We may need to negotiate a little bit in the event that you have any public buildings that are only serviced by electric and not natural gas. I don't know whether you do or not, but we could talk either with Mr. Collins in Norwood Light, but I would be willing to bet that here in Norwood, all of your municipal accounts are on natural gas.
Well, so we have a couple of electric buildings, but the majority are natural gas. There's also, there's a staff component that we can come up with the energy reduction plan. I didn't use consultants when I did the Southern Western Mass. I developed our whole energy reduction plan. So there's items you can look at that you know that there's models out there that evolve for all the talents, and if we replace X number of water heaters we have in town facilities with energy-saving ones, you know, why is what the energy savings result is? There's also grants through M A P C to help prepare the plan, but we'd be able to do it at a staff level if we weren't able to.
So that was the other thing I was going to add. Is grant money available from DOE or through MAPC to assist with the development of the energy reduction plan as well? The fourth requirement, the town has to adopt what's called a fuel-efficient vehicle purchase policy. I'll talk about the details on that in a little bit. And both the energy reduction plan and the fuel-efficient vehicle purchase policy would need to be adopted by the select board and the school department as well. The fifth requirement is the adoption of a little more energy-efficient building code, which is called the stretch code. And I'm going to go into fair amount more detail on that in a minute. So, next slide, please. So this is just a basic flow chart on how we get started and develop a plan to have towns become designated. And we are here discussing with the local government, which is in step two, you know, what it takes to become a Green Community. So, next slide, please. So this goes over criteria one, which we're already meeting, so we can go right on to, actually, we can go right to the criteria three slide, which is number 12. So your energy reduction plan looks at all of your energy use as a town. So all your municipal buildings and schools, all your operations, all your vehicles, all your lighting, like streetlights and things of that nature. We set your baseline. Then, if we can go to the next slide, using free energy tracking software that's available through the department, we can develop the energy reduction plan. We can actually set it up so we can look at every single building, identify what the electric and natural gas usage is by month, identify which of your buildings are least energy-efficient and would qualify for, you know, the biggest bang for the buck on energy audit and energy conservation measures. So we would love to see all of our towns do this type of a process, whether they're going to become a Green Community or not, really can show you the areas that you may want to, you know, try to take advantage of energy efficiency. Next slide, please. So I put this graphic up to allay the fears of the police and fire chief who aren't here any longer, but the vehicles that are identified here are vehicles that are not subject to the fuel-efficient purchase policy. So what we ask towns to do is they need to come up with an inventory of all the town-owned vehicles. You look at our policy and identify which vehicles would be subject to the policies and which one would be exempt. And then moving forward into the future, when it's time to replace vehicles that would be subject to the policy, you have to replace it with a vehicle that meets a very basic mile-per-gallon rating that's in our guidance. There's no mandate for electric vehicles, there's no mandate for hybrids.
So what is the mandate?
So it's really for administrative vehicles only.
The efficiency mandate, you said miles per gallon?
Yeah, so it depends on what kind of a vehicle you're looking at. And so if you looked at our, if you looked at our guidance, it goes from, could identify like a sedan at like 24 miles per gallon, a half-ton pickup truck at, you know, whatever the mile-per-gallon rating is, things of that nature.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, this portion of the policy is not, is directly applicable to us. We don't use a lot of pool vehicles. There are a lot of communities out there where there are assessors, there are building inspectors, there are health inspectors, all use a variety of sedans to get around. So those are more easily targetable, it's fuel-efficient. Most of your DPW vehicles, your light vehicles are exempt from the process, as are police vehicles, although the chief is just telling me there's going to be a hybrid available that's doing very well in performance tests in the next year or two. So we, as you know, pay our inspectors a stipend to use their own personal vehicles. There are some towns out there that have a fleet of 10 or 15 or 20 vehicles. Some towns have parking enforcement vehicles where those are switching over to more fuel-efficient vehicles. So not, I really don't have a concern about us moving in this direction because it'll be a while before it really starts to impact any of our food purchases.
So items like to fall, we're in pretty good shape.
Yes.
Just one more question.
Sure.
You just want to reiterate, the miles per gallon is the only criteria based for the fuel-efficient vehicle?
Right. So if you look, right, if you look at our guidance, it identifies different types of vehicles, say sedan, SUV, pickup truck.
Okay.
And identifies a mile-per-gallon rating. And if you were purchasing a new vehicle that was supposed to meet this policy, that the mile-per-gallon rating would be equal to or greater than that.
I understand. And any of these guidances able to be changed in the future? We accept this, and then three years down the road, you folks come back and say, well, we've added another component out of the miles per gallon?
So that is possible, yeah, that the mile-per-gallon ratings could change in the future. Yep.
And the adding of any other criteria?
Like that they have to be electric?
Pardon me?
Like that they have to be electric. Such as they have to be electric instead of gas-powered?
Well, that's highly unlikely. So it's not that we haven't looked at the mile-per-gallon ratings, because they haven't been renewed, quite honestly, quite some time, like in about 2008. So again, there are currently no mandates for electric or hybrid vehicles, and we don't see that changing.
Well, it's the mandates that concern me, because what they say today, you know, it's very enticing.
Exactly.
And then three years from now, they say, well, we've updated this, and now that you're in a program, you're going to do this, and we're sort of stuck. And if you want to get out, then you have to somehow repay a portion of the grant that you were given.
I assume you're just not qualified for the grant anymore.
Correct.
Right.
Mr. Collins, can you chuck in on that?
The one thing I just wanted to add is that if anything does change, you can no longer be in compliance with the policy, at which point we are not asking for money back, but you would not be eligible for future grants.
Okay.
Until we became compliant again.
Exactly. Yep.
Thank you.
So as the slide says, police cruisers are exempt until they're commercially available. We don't plan on getting into that business at all. As Tony said, Ford is going to hybrids for their police cruiser package. That's their choice. Again, that's not something that we're mandating. And heavy-duty vehicles with a gross vehicle weight of 8,500 pounds and greater are exempt from this policy. That's a three-quarter-ton pickup truck. So a three-quarter-ton pickup truck and larger is exempt from this policy.
So obviously, fire trucks.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Yes. Next slide, please. So the last criteria, the fifth one, is the stretch code. That needs to be voted on at town meeting. So that has been the reason that my region has been the slowest to come up to speed on becoming as populated in the Green Communities program. But back in January of 2017, the building code for the base energy code and the stretch code became very similar. And so what used to be a stretch is no longer as much of a stretch. But as this slide says, the way it needs to be adopted here in town will be through town meeting vote. So some details on the stretch code. Can we have the next slide, please? So there are 251 actually now cities and towns. Nantucket just passed a stretch code last night. So there's 251 out of the 351 cities and towns here in Massachusetts that have adopted the stretch code. It's at least 80% of the population. So that can give you an idea of which towns are in, and we're working to fill in the blanks here in my region. So can we go to the next slide, please? So briefly, what the stretch code is. As the stretch code currently exists, it only applies to new residential construction and certain commercial and industrial construction. So it's new residential construction only, and for commercial construction, it's for buildings of 100,000 square feet and greater, or energy-intensive types of CNI construction, which would be like supermarkets and laboratories for 40,000 square feet or at least in greater. Additions, renovations, and repairs to residential structures are exempt from the stretch code. So that means that if you pass the stretch code in town tomorrow, the energy code for additions, renovations, and repairs would be the same code as it is today, tomorrow. So next slide, please.
Just clarification, but you said residential, but not commercial?
Pardon me?
You said for residential, but not commercial? With regard to, you're saying exempt from stretch code, are you talking about residential, additions, renovations, repairs, or residential and commercial?
It's any, it's any, it's any of those. So this slide talks about how the stretch code isn't as much of a stretch as it used to be. The base energy code and the stretch code are very similar. The current base code allows builders two options for residential and commercial new construction. You can either do what's called a prescriptive path, where you basically check off a bunch of boxes and have a couple of tests done on the building, or you can choose the performance path, where there's a pre- and post-construction energy model and verification along with the tests. So can we go to the next slide? So the major difference between the two is that you have to do the performance path if you do the stretch code. So there's a person called a HERS-rater that identifies what the HERS-rating of the house is, and I'm going to go into that in a minute. They assist during the construction. They provide an energy model with the building permit application. And then they make sure that the installation of the weather sealing and the insulation and things of that nature are going along properly during destruction. And then they test the home for performance and pass in the results of that test at the end of the process with the building inspector when the builder seeks occupancy. So we can go to the next slide. So why do you want to test performance? The basic reason for that is prescriptive codes don't guarantee that the installation of your insulation and your weather sealing and things of that nature have actually been done. Small air gaps can cause, you know, draft issues and not allow insulation to perform the way it should. And a HERS-rater provides third-party verification that all those things have been done correctly. So next slide, please.
Just a question, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
All right, so we're discussing the inspection function here. Does this require additional training for your inspectors? It doesn't seem like it would.
Nope.
Okay.
So this describes the process. And I think will hopefully answer your question. So the HERS-rater is a third party that's tied by the builder. And so, in fact, many of the building inspectors find that this is the benefit when they're doing stretch code homes, because the HERS-rater works with the insulation and mechanical systems installers to make sure that things are being done correctly. So here's how the process works. During the building permit application process, there is a computer model designed done of the building for the energy component of the building, and the HERS-rating has to be a 55 or less. And then during the construction, there are in-process inspections that are done for duct tightness, making sure that the insulation is installed correctly. And at the end, there's a thing called a blow-a-door test to make sure that the envelope of the house is as tight as it's supposed to be. And then the HERS-rater finalizes the energy model based on the verified performance in the equipment and identifies what the HERS-rating is, and it has to come back as a 55 or lower. So if we go to the next slide, what this slide tries to point out is really the only difference between the base code and the stretch code is that you have to do step one and step three when you do the base code. These inspections, the duct testing and the blow-a-door test that are inside the red box are required by the base code. The difference is the computer model that identifies and designs the house to meet the 55 HERS-rating and the finalized performance analysis that confirms that the house has met the 55 HERS-rating target or less. So can we go to the next slide? So hopefully, this helps understand what that HERS-rating means. When we first were doing this, the code that was in play back in the middle 2000s was the IECC code of 2006. You can see that reference home analysis, and it says the standard home was 100. Since then, because of changes in the energy code here in Massachusetts, if you did a base code home and if you chose to test it, the HERS-rating would be somewhere around a 62 to a 65. But with a HERS, with a stretch code home and a HERS-rating of 55, because this is a linear scale, what that means is your home would be 11 to 15% more energy-efficient if you had a HERS 55 home as compared to a 62 or a 65.
Thank you.
So that's a lot of detail in a short period of time on the stretch code. The reason that, you know, we talk about it, when I talked to Tony a little bit about how much of it to put in the presentation, is because it's going to require a vote. We know your town meeting is coming up in May. We will be glad to come back if the board in the town would like us to come back and do public outreach so that people can, you know, have a level of comfort in whether or not to make an informed decision on their vote. And be able to ask any questions that, you know, feel free to digest this and come back with questions as well, because it's a lot in a short period of time. So the last, the last slide has Nick and my contact information on it. We're always available. You can call anytime or shoot me an email, and we'll get back to you. So any questions?
Any questions from Norwood?
Thank you. I think we've asked them as we went along.
Mr. Lawrence has a question.
Just real quick then, Mr. Pickering. So it sounds to me like the program is going to be most effective in towns where there's a lot of new construction going on, and less effective in towns where, towns that are pretty much built out. Is it fair to say?
So, can I jump in?
Sure.
Go for it.
Our focus, yeah, our focus is on the municipal energy consumption. So the residential, the stretch energy code is a net benefit to everyone, and it's part of the program as the legislature developed it for us.
Okay.
But the funding we're providing and our goal is to reduce the municipal energy consumption.
Oh, all right.
On the government side, which hopefully will then spark, you know...
The stretch code is just one element, one of the five criteria.
Yeah, it's one of the five. Yep.
I see what you're saying.
It's one of the five, but the primary benefit from our program in the grant money is to the municipality.
I mean, to your point, Tom, we're not building 100 new single-family homes a year in Norwood. We just don't have the space. But I believe the stretch code applies to larger multifamily units, large apartment complexes. Stretch code, was it just single-family homes?
Well, you mean new construction?
Correct.
No, it's all residential, isn't it?
Yeah. So if you have, if you have a question about, I'd have to get back to you on that. I believe there's a limit on the size of the units, but I can check on that for you.
But we have brought on housing units in the last few years, and we do still see new construction coming in. Again, we're not adding large subdivisions every year because we just don't have the space, but there is new construction. And one of the points...
I'm just trying to interrupt. You say residential construction, you've got 198 units in the quarter of the month actually. So would their permitting require adherence to stretch code hereafter?
Well, they're already permitted, so no. But let's say that project happened in a year, yes.
Okay.
So as part of passing the stretch code, you would pick an effective date, anything, any building permit prior to that would not be required, do any building from that day forward would be required?
Yeah, okay.
And just one point, I mean, we have the Subaru New England building is the LEED-certified building, so there are builders out there building their buildings to a much higher standard than just the stretch code.
Which may be the case now, but we don't know.
Correct. That's true. We shouldn't say that they're not energy-efficient by any means. I don't know the status of their construction, but you're right, there's a lot of builders out there going above and beyond both residential and commercial. And one point I always make about the investment in the building stock is it's important to remember, we have good contractors in town, they build good buildings. We would never want somebody who just wants to build something cheap and run away, because the community will live with those buildings for many, many years to come.
Thank you for that. Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
I'm also, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Manager, to your knowledge, this five criteria, can we accomplish all five?
Yes, sir. I have, without a problem. I will, it's pending a town meeting vote, of course. I've done this in the last community that I worked in. Mr. Halkiotis has done it in a previous community he worked in, so we're both actually very familiar with the process. There is some legwork that needs to get done to get the energy reduction plan in for the next round of applications, but I'm not, I don't think that'll be a problem. Usually, you start that after you've kind of gotten all of your ducks in a row with all of your approvals, and then you go right into the energy reduction plan. We'll begin that over the summer.
All right. One of the things we have on the agenda tonight is to sign the existing warrant for town meeting. Is this something we're contemplating for the fall town meeting?
This is on the special town meeting.
On the special, okay.
Stretch code is on there.
All right. Thank you.
Excellent.
Mr. Pickering, Mr. Collins, thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time. Okay, we have finished up our appointments for the evening. We have new business if we can. Number one, special town meeting warrant. A for the signature through the board. Do I have a recommendation on that?
Or is it a sign?
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
Opposed, unanimous? And B, positions and recommendations on the special town meeting warrant. Do we have any positions? Because we want to talk about it tonight, or can we do that at the night of the town meeting?
No. Well, we should take a position as A, so we can put together... No, well, we should take a position as A, so we can put together our yellow sheet and, you know, get information out to town meeting. And I don't know if we could really wait another week, because this is the 25th, we gotta take a position, you gotta write it, and then print it, so probably, probably should go tonight.
Okay.
If I, if could, Paul's sticking around for just a moment, if you have any questions particular to the zoning...
Oh, don't worry.
Well, you can take them any order you want, I figure you can see yourself.
Do we, is it customary here, only because of the memory fades, is it customary for us to take positions on things like planning articles? I assume it is, but you can take anything we want, right?
Okay.
We can do, we can choose to whatever we want to choose to do.
There's one small addition we'd like the board to consider, number 21, it's listed as transportation, transportation infrastructure fund. We'd intended to include this on the special and it had been left off. It's a request to appropriate $99,000. This money actually comes to us from the state. It's actually a tax that the state has on ride-share services, so Uber and Lyft, and they distribute that back out to the communities based on the number of rides they have. It then has to be appropriated by town meeting, but can only be spent for transportation-related projects or processes. We don't get a ton of money for it, it's $98,000, $99,000. We'd had some discussions earlier in the year, we'd look like to do bike racks at the parks in town. You can do it on bicycle or pedestrian infrastructure, but again, it is only $99,000, $9988. So, there's not really a lot of road work or bridges we can get done for that, so we felt that bike racks would be a good, good use of the funds.
Any comments from the board?
Question?
Sure.
How many bike racks would you be buying for $10,000?
Generally one for each field.
How many fields do we have?
I think we're purchasing about a dozen.
A dozen, how much is each bike rack?
It depends on the size and how big you're gonna actually purchase them and whether or not you want the, you know, we have some in front of the Civic that need to get replaced, do you want just a metal bike rack, do you want the more decorative ones? So we're...
So you're confident you can get it done with the $10,000, do what you want with the $10,000?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Seems like you should be able to.
Yup. Move to add Article 21 to the warrant and to...
Support it.
Support it.
Second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous.
If this had been $900,000, I would say let's pave roads and fix bridges.
We have both further discussion if it was $900,000.
Well, keep taking Uber and Lyft and it will someday.
Yeah, that's true.
Just a question, Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
What I don't see on the list is the issue that the FinCom had put in regarding stabilization fund for large vehicles?
Yeah, we, we would do that at the annual if we were going to do that, to create it. There's no funding source for it yet.
Yep.
So it didn't, the FinCom didn't formally transmit that to us.
What have they said, then? Well, no, I was requested at the time to work with town council, I did send an email to town council and Tony to work on the wording for it.
I'm just saying, we have...
It'd be better to put on the, on the annual warrant.
Okay, so is that something that probably goes to be working on?
Mr., you would have to share with your colleagues if that's what you would want to do. Again, we, we never got a formal letter from the FinCom, I know you and I talked about it. They wanna establish a special purpose stabilization fund for vehicle purchases, large vehicle purchases. So the board hasn't had a chance to discuss that yet. And we don't have a funding mechanism, so it's just a matter of we can create a fund at any time, similar to the override stabilization fund, which will get created. If an override doesn't pass, it's just an existing sort of empty shell, if you will.
I think the commission was looking to have the fund created and at some point we could fund it, but we wanted to...
So you just want the shell, basically?
We wanted the shell and have the establishment of it, of this coming, the special annual, wasn't sure which one, and that was the purpose of that.
My recommendation would be to do it at the annual.
I would say annual also. Anybody else have a problem with that?
I haven't heard much about it.
That's why we need time to...
Probably not, not prepared to move on it tonight.
We're probably signing the annual next week, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's not that complicated of a process, it's just we, I would recommend we bump into the annual.
Alright, thank you.
Would this be an item that would take from cash?
So, what they're looking to do is just establish the fund, there's no funding source yet, so...
No, no, I understand. But if you did fund it, it'd have to be from cash, right?
Wherever you want to take the money from.
Well, I mean, you're not gonna finance it, right?
Correct, no, it would be a stabilization account. You could have money directly in your operating budget, you could have money from free cash or any other source. If you got a reimbursement check or something that didn't go into the general fund, you could say dedicate it to the large vehicle replacement fund.
But the only thing with me is that, that's further depleting the free cash, you know...
Correct, there's, there's no appropriation at this...
If we were doing it today, based on where our financial picture is, it would probably have to be some of the remaining, which is, wondering quickly, free cash, or decide to take it from some other item and not do that other item.
No, but my point is, like, last year when we took, in round numbers, $2 million for the computer stuff from free cash, that really put us behind the eight ball this year.
Well, it depends on how you want to look at it. If you remember, that 1.7 million in free cash was actually the same amount as a one-time bond premium we received when the treasurer refinanced some bonds. So if we hadn't done that, we wouldn't have had that, so that was sort of one-time, one-time money, if you will.
No, I understand, but what I'm saying is, if we had financed that, that would've been 1.7 that we would have had this year.
Yeah, at some point the board should put it on their agenda to have a further discussion on it.
That's the only point.
But to start with, we have to create the vessel.
Correct. And only town meeting can create a special purpose stabilization fund, and just creating it doesn't mean you're putting money into it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else we want to discuss here?
Let's see, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Motion to support items, Articles 1 through 4, adopt cordial licensing...
Second.
Boston skating club senior donation and veterans donation check-offs, 1 through 4.
I have a motion and a second to approve Articles 1 through 4, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, unanimous. Move on to 6, 5, 6, 7, 8.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Sir.
Mr. Muzuko, is this, is this the order we've agreed on, the final order of submission?
It is, however the board could, we discussed this order at the last Articles meeting.
Yeah, that's how the warrant's set up.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Per view of the board, although...
Right, it's, okay.
It's not broken, we don't want to fix it.
Correct.
So, if you entertain it, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Similar to taking that group, I think we've had information on all the items 9 through 20, and they're all basically money issues that we need to get through this year. And the recommendations from the administration as to where that money should come from. And I'd like to make a motion that we also support a town meeting 9 through 21, I guess, or 9 through 20, we already voted 21.
Second.
All in favor for 9 through 21?
Support.
A motion for that, that's...
Yup, so moved.
Okay. What about 5, 6, 7, 8?
Well, we'll get to those. We'll get to the motion.
Those are possibly more involved, whether we want to take position or what they might be.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor and I have a second, all in favor of accepting Articles 9 through 21 as they are stated?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, passed unanimous.
Mr. Chair?
Sir.
I'd like to make a motion to support Items 8 and 9.
8 and 9.
Did we say, do you want to do 9?
Yeah, we did 9.
So 8?
8 is what we just discussed here with the...
Yeah, no, I want to support 8.
Adopt the stretch energy code.
Right.
Can I have a second on that?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous, to adopt Article 8. And we're gonna do what with 5, 6, and 7?
Well, if you want to have any further explanation or if you think you know enough about them, Mr. Halke Otis is here, as the manager pointed out. I have a question, if I might, jumping around though, at number 7.
Yes, sir.
This is really the, kind of the first, I think we've heard of it with some discussion, obviously, had a big presentation on the overlay district and, you know, what the footnote was about, but this is the first time I've really seen anything about the open lot. Can you just kind of talk about that, what this is all about?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank Paul for saying he came here for the Green Communities presentation and we're sort of...
Yeah, we appreciate it.
...calling him for zoning questions, so we appreciate that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And again, congratulations to our incumbent selectmen and new selectmen. The planning board has, and the Board of Appeals have been approving open lot storage for automobiles. There's been a number of lots that have been approved over the years. The way the zoning works is that for smaller auto storage lots, and these are lots where no cars are sold from them, people are not shown cars on these lots, these are inventory lots that are usually fenced off for, for storage. For smaller lots of 99 or fewer vehicles, the zoning bylaw charges the Board of Appeals to issue special permits for, for those lots. Our zoning bylaw in designating what's a major project is a number of triggering thresholds. And for, for parking lots or auto storage of more than 100 cars, the planning board is the special permitting authority. Since I've been here, the planning board has, has approved, I think, three of these open lot, storage lots with over 100 vehicles. And we've tried to take care to make sure that, that those lots are screened from view, that they're secure, they're lit, and that there's a solid fence and some landscaping in front of the lot so that they don't just look like a big parking lot from the street. As you know, the planning board just approved last fall a controversial project for open lot storage for DCD Realty Trust. Project involved initially storing vehicles on, on both sides of the Ponson River, and it was subsequently scaled back. It's about to get finalized by the Conservation Commission tomorrow night. During the public hearing process for that project, it was very contentious, and we heard from the neighborhood residents, they, they really didn't want to have this in their neighborhood. They were concerned about environmental issues, about traffic, about car carriers, leaving the Route 1 corridor and accessing other parts of town that aren't necessarily very accessible to big car carriers because of the height of the railroad bridges. And initially, the 84 Moore Street project had a, had a car carrier going out and through Walpole and around, and there was concerns about that, that those trucks negotiating the turn off of Washington Street to Short Street to access the site, and whether or not these trucks could actually make the turn without swinging into oncoming traffic where there might be vehicles stacked up and in a lane waiting to make a turn. Open lot storage does not involve usually any buildings. There is no real estate taxes generated from the town besides just the base land. They oftentimes involve some environmental issues to clear a lot, grade it, pave it, or put down crushed stone or something and manage the stormwater. And open lot storage doesn't create any local jobs. As part of my job, wearing my economic development hat, we try to, to promote development and support development that will increase our tax base and will create jobs locally. Neither one of those boxes get checked off by these projects. We stepped back and we said, well, it seems like we got a lot of these. Just how many do we have and what is the extent of, of this? And the research that Assistant Town Planner Pat DeShains did in, in going back a long way in, in special permits that the Board of Appeals had issued going back 20, 30 years, and the permits that the planning board issued, we were able to verify that outside of the auto mile, there's about 40 acres that are currently used just for open lot storage, and that there are over 3,000 vehicles, open lot storage. The open lot storage issue has been an ongoing zoning enforcement headache for the building commissioner. We have found parking lots full of brand-new vehicles, unregistered, all over town, and the way the zoning has been set up was it's only allowed in the manufacturing district. But we found them in limited manufacturing and, and highway business all over town, and this has been an enforcement issue where the building inspector is chasing down whoever owns those vehicles, giving them, you know, 30 days to get them out of there. And then, lo and behold, they just pop up behind a building somewhere else in town where they don't have a special permit and, and are in violation of the zoning bylaw. The planning board has discussed this issue, and you may recall, I drafted a zoning article to address this for town meeting last year. We pulled that article because we didn't feel it would pass, and it was in the middle of all the controversy with the 84 Moore Street project, and we were getting comments through back channels that, you know, would lead me to believe that we would not be able to achieve a two-thirds of getting that article passed, so we pulled it. Then the planning board went through eight months of, of the permitting process with 84 Moore Street, and we heard over and over again through hours of testimony from people that they didn't want to see this. They talked about the auto mile was supposed to be two miles long, not two miles wide. And the encroachment of car carriers and open lot storage in proximity to residential neighborhoods has been identified as a, as a concern, a traffic safety concern, in addition to the no-tax revenue, no jobs created, the environmental issues, there are traffic safety issues from heavy car carriers coming and going, depositing and picking up cars from those sites. Given all of that, the planning board discussed creating a, establishing a one-year moratorium for us to study the issue. And we would undertake a planning study in, over the next year and try to figure out what we can do. The auto mile and the car dealers are important to the town's financial base, and we understand that. The, the, the number of employees that, that are employed on the auto mile is significant, and we can't overlook the fact that a lot of the town's identity and its positive financial situation has to do with the presence of the auto mile and those car dealerships and donations and things that the auto dealers have made to the town over the years. So, we want to take a fair but, but clear objective approach to analyzing this issue. And for this reason, the planning board decided that they wanted to propose a one-year moratorium. The vote was unanimous on the planning board, and so we intend to present that article to the voters and, and try to compel them to give us some time to study the issue. Ultimately, I think where we will end up is that we will include a number of changes to the bylaw, but, but the one that we think will probably be the most obvious is to allow parking garages or storage structures on the auto mile, so that those dealerships can continue to grow in place and contain the proliferation of clearing all these lots for open lot storage to the auto mile. So we've got 40 acres outside of that and 3,000-plus cars, you know, zoning issue that we're trying to, to deal with.
Alright, thank you.
So, if the town follows, if I followed you correctly, that process, it'd allow, the town would allow parking garage structures on their properties on Route 1, but you didn't say anything about eliminating the ones that are off of auto mile.
Well, as you probably...
Because unless we can, and this may be improper terminology, unless we squeeze them so that they don't park where they're currently parking, they're not gonna spend the money on garages and everything, they're gonna go to the cheapest land available to park those cars.
So, as, as most of you know, the concept of grandfathering applies to zoning, and anything that has lawfully been permitted can continue that use forever.
Right, but is there zones that they might go to that's not yet permitted, so shouldn't we be restricting that use in those zones?
There, there could be other zoning districts where, where we could allow the use, and there's actually been proposals to open up all of the limited manufacturing zone to this use, which is all of the University Ave area, basically our office, campus, corporate office, district, where that kind of use isn't what the planning board really wanted to see there. And all of the land off of the old Polaroid site off of Route 1A is also limited manufacturing. There's other areas of town. And we knew that if we opened it up to the L-M district, we'd just see forest, forest clear cut to store vehicles. And so, yeah, if we, if we go the route of allowing for parking garages along the auto mile, it will require some, some reinvestment from those dealerships into modernizing, putting all their inventory undercover where they protect it, where people can actually shop at night and during rain and snow, and they don't have to go clear cars off after storms. So there, there's some clear benefits to, to the auto dealers.
Sir.
I'm typically apprehensive about moratoriums and that kind of discussion, but I think what's been happening in the town in this area, it might be good for us to take a short break, which one year would be a short break, to look at all this and make sure all our boards are talking. For example, there's been a couple of relatively recent, including before the Concom tomorrow night, and one recently down on Everett Street not that long ago, that are getting permitted for open lot storage. And yet, and I'll stand corrected, but my belief is, they haven't been approved by the fire chief, and we just passed the bylaw, an acceptance statute at town meeting, that there'll be no open space storage... be no open space storage lots without permits from the fire chief. So I think we need to get everybody on board and decide just what the town's policies are, and make sure everyone's aware of all of them, and possibly some zoning changes as part of that process, too. So while typically I'm personally not hot on moratoriums, I think I would be supportive of this, at this time of this article.
If I could, I think it makes more sense to slow down a little bit and work our way through this, so I'm all in favor of that moratorium also. Mr. Maloney, sir.
Chairman, just picking up, Mr. Plasko said the same statute that we accepted in a year or two ago, Mr. Plasko also allows us to charge for a fee for open-
It does. It's not contingent on that, but it certainly does allow that, and it's something we've kind of been negligent in following up on ourselves as well. So this, again, will probably all be implemented to be effective at the same time, again, as I said, with everybody in town knowing what we're doing.
Yeah. Just one other question then, Mr. Chairman.
Great, sir.
So just getting back to the 40 acres in a mule, or the 40 acres of auto vehicle storage, the, that includes, Mr. Halakiotis, areas that have not been permitted, that are in violation, is that correct?
No.
Okay, so 40 acres that have been permitted, and then there are other areas that we might or might not know about, but definitely know some that are not, that are in violation and not permitted.
That's correct. And I can't project what tax revenue the town could get on an acre of commercially-zoned land that had an office building, but you can imagine 40 acres of our commercially-zoned land really is not realizing the tax generation that the town should be realizing from it, and that's part of this issue.
Mr. Ja, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Bill and with Tom. One is, I hope we put on a future agenda in this whole idea of the fee discussion about, I think it needs to be followed up on. The Board did a good job a couple of years in accepting the applicable master general law that would allow us to do that, and I think we should move forward on it, but we need to talk about it in the whole context of it. Two, I think there just needs to be a better balance. I don't think anyone on this board is looking to, you know, push out any of the car dealerships, but I think when it comes to, when they're going outside of their own facilities to park in other areas, that we just, there needs to be a better balance of what we're trying to do in those other areas, and I don't think we're getting that. And I understand that they want through a rigorous zoning process and a zoning appeals process to get the right permits, but I'm specifically referring to what Tom referred to as those that are doing it illegally in other zones. And I don't think it's just a matter of going after the dealerships. To me, it's notifying the property owners that are allowing these vehicles to be parked at these locations to say, hey, you're culpable in this. So it's not just the dealerships, it's the property owners. Again, we're not looking to punish, but the zoning laws are in place for a reason, because the town has decided what it wants in certain parts of town. And open lot storage is not, in certain parts of this town, acceptable. And when property owners do it, hey, you can't necessarily blame the auto dealerships because, hey, if I can get it done, and it's only costing me $5 a car per day, and I'm giving them income, that's fine. So I think we need to look at not just the dealership issue.
We understand that neighboring towns prohibit this use, and we've got cars stored right now from auto dealerships from other communities. They're being brought into it. I didn't really want to get into detail, but there's one other connected issue that I wanted to mention. We have, we've known for some time that the two-mile corridor of Route 1 has four different zoning districts. If you drive from one end to the other, it all looks pretty much the same, like an urbanized commercial corridor. However, they're four different districts. And so the approach that we're going to take is, we're going to look for some grants or technical assistance to conduct a corridor study of Route 1. And then what will be part of this is uniform zoning for the whole district along Route 1, and that particular, you know, auto storage would be, you know, a use that's allowed all within that corridor. And that will help to provide some relief to the dealerships for areas that currently aren't available because they're not allowed for that, but they're in close proximity to their dealerships. So this is going to be part of a bigger study of the Route 1 corridor that really needs a structural fix, analysis that's overdue.
Thank you, Mr. Halakiotis. Any other questions on Article 7?
No, thank you.
Could you quickly just touch on the multifamily footnote article?
So when we had our, the last time I was here, the Planning Board, the Board of Appeals, met with the Board of Selectmen, and our consultant, Ted Brovitz, presented the mixed-use overlay district bylaw that he's written for us. At that meeting, Phil Riley, member of, longstanding member of the Board of Appeals, made the point that, you know, hey, really, we just needed this footnote 2 fixed, and we're not sure why you're doing this big long bylaw for the downtown. And he pointed out, and this is what we already knew, that there's a restriction in the zoning bylaw, we refer to as footnote 2, that ends up requiring a bigger yard area or lot area per residential unit in all of our commercial districts. And this has been the one thing that has really prevented the redevelopment of properties to create additional residential units in all of our commercial districts. And so I listened to what Phil said, and we have a lot of respect for Phil and the Board of Appeals, and I asked my consultant, can you fix this? Give me a fix for footnote 2, and that will address what the Board of Appeals has asked to have addressed, and then the overlay district will apply just to the downtown. And so footnote 2, that article, Article 6?
Article 6, yes.
Article 6. Adds, provides some relief that allows some greater density of residential in our commercial zones, and that density that would be allowed if Article 6 is approved would be about 16 acres per unit, and that's pretty much consistent with the lower end of the range of what we're going to allow in the downtown. And so this was done to address the concerns raised by the Board of Appeals and their frustration for not being able to approve good projects because of that restriction in footnote 2.
Thank you. And I think we all have been educated on Article 5, mixed-use overlay district in the central business district, what we intend to do in the uptown area. Mr. Ja.
Just a question there, because part of the correspondence when you get to new business is a letter received from-
Judith Howard and Tony Esco.
Yes, questions regarding that, so I didn't know if Paul has seen that yet.
I have, and I actually responded back this afternoon, and I think the selectmen were copied in that email, so I did provide a response, and I think they'll like what I said for just about all of my responses.
Are you up to date on that?
Not with his email.
Okay. Maybe you could give Mr. Ja an update on the whole concept of the central business district and what we're trying to do with it.
I've read it and I understand it. I just didn't, just wanted, the questions that were raised by Tony and Judith sort of evaluated, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I will note that tomorrow night at the Civic Center in the Wilt Room at 7:00 PM, we'll be doing our last outreach meeting, and we've invited all of the town meeting members to a public informational session. The consultant will give his presentation describing the bylaw, and we'll take questions and answers from town meeting members tomorrow evening.
Very good. Thank you for that. Mr. Howard, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening. $64 question. On 5 and 6, what is the benefit to the town of Norwood for dense housing in the central business district? To the town of Norwood, not the developers?
Yep. So the, I wouldn't describe 16 or 24 units per acre of housing, when we're talking about three- or four-story buildings, as dense. Our downtown has been suffering for years, and it's been stagnant. We haven't seen any new construction, any reconstruction, any additions, remodelings. We have seen very little investment to our downtown. I don't know when the last building was built or an addition went on to it. We've seen the mix of businesses go downhill. I love pizza, but we counted 18 pizza shops within a walking distance from here, and there's a plethora of nail salons. We don't see our building owners reinvesting in their buildings. There's, on average, at any given time, about a dozen vacant storefronts in the downtown. You can get on Route 1A and drive to Walpole, and you can see economic activity and reinvestment in their downtown. You can go the other direction to Dedham, and you can see what's happening there. There's life being breathed back to create more vibrant downtowns. And over the last 20 years, I've observed communities deliberately making changes to their zoning bylaws to allow more residential in the downtown areas, because when people live there, they tend to spend their dollars locally and patronize those businesses. Living in downtown areas has become popular for two demographics. For seniors, for our older people, that have decided that they don't want to take care of, you know, their property, a single-family home anymore, they've got empty bedrooms, the kids are all gone, they want to downsize, and they'd like to live close to where the town centers are. The other demographic are young people. And people in their 20s and 30s are not necessarily interested in a house and a two-car garage, the American dream of suburbia where, you know, where we all grew up, looking forward to, and what we enjoy. They want to live close to the action. They want to live close to public transportation. They oftentimes don't even have cars. They Uber, they use public transportation, they Zipcar or rent when they need to, and they want to be in our downtown areas. We currently have about 300 residential units in our downtown. You'd never know that. There's never, we don't really hear about many problems with them. And we looked around as part of the inventory, which was the base, the first step in a planning process like this, and we identified Allavardes as a building that has 16 apartments, and the density of that single building is 41 dwelling units per acre. Is that that bad? We think that's a model for what we should be trying to do in the future. And so by allowing greater density, we anticipate reinvestment and new life being breathed back to the downtown. It'll be slow, but we think it will be effective, and we really think that this is a positive step forward that the town can make to try to revitalize our downtown.
And if it does work in the downtown central business district, we can expand it further and further out, all the way to South.
Yes, and footnote 2 sets the table for that.
Just a minor note, I was in Walpole last week. They had six vacancies in their small downtown area. Six vacancies.
Yeah. Economic trends are driving things out of the downtown.
I don't know. What would you anticipate, you say there's 300 units downtown now?
Yeah.
What would you anticipate if this went crazy at the optimum here?
We have not done a projection on that. It's pretty-
350, 400, 450?
It's pretty variable. I'll talk to our consultant about it, because it is a question that will come up at town meeting, and we'd like to have an answer, and we'll probably present it in a range of what our projections are. But the overlay district extends from Carter Street down to the railroad tracks, and so there's a neighborhood there that could likely see some change coming out of this besides just our corridor along Washington Street.
But most developers would only do it if they could get more units to pay them back for it.
Absolutely, they will not take a risk unless they can get a return on their investment. And that's why striking a balance of enough units to make it worth their while to take that risk versus too many units and I won't get my two-thirds vote at town meeting.
See, my small point is, Norwood Crossing has 105 units. I think they have one child in the whole complex. Are those people shopping downtown now? And of course, we have 198 going in over there.
I think, real quick, some of those people are shopping downtown. We'd rather avoid those larger, monstrous complexes. What you want is smaller scale, the Allavardes building is a perfect example. That's what we want to see, rather than 150-unit complexes going up.
No, no, all I'm saying is, they're there. Are they, you know, taking advantage of the close commercial district down here?
Well, there's not really, in my opinion, there's not really a lot to draw them. I think if we go forward with this overlay, it'll create an environment where people may have better stores and shops to go to, more inviting restaurants to go to, it'd be a more inviting downtown all around, and I think that's what we're trying to get to.
I can't speak for the, obviously, the whole 105. I think it is apartments over there at Norwood Crossing, but I, as the manager said, there's definitely a people there. I see people, an old couple in particular in the morning coming out, and they go down to Dunkin' Donuts every morning, they go over to the diner for lunch. I see a few other people going into some of the stores that I know are coming from that complex, and I can only imagine that there's ones I don't know about. So is all 105 major users of downtown? Certainly couldn't swear to that, but I have no doubt in saying that they do use the commercial availability that is around there within our quarters.
Thank you.
And again, if somebody has a question and they want to bring up a question, they can do it tomorrow night at the Civic at 7:00 PM.
Yes.
And we'll go over the whole thing, soup to nuts.
Yep, and folks, if they have questions, can always call my office and we're glad to talk to you.
Very good, thank you. Are we all set with Mr. Halakiotis?
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Do we care to take a position on these at town meetings? They're not necessarily our issues. Sometimes we feel stronger than we do, but certainly not required to.
I'll make a motion that we endorse Number 5, Article 5, mixed-use overlay district.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous? And we leave the others, Mr. Ja, sorry.
Move that we support Article 7, the zoning vehicle moratorium.
Okay, the same thing with Article 7. We have a motion on the floor for Article 7.
On the motion?
Sir.
Mr. Chairman, just a review. What we're talking about, it's a one-year moratorium.
Correct.
Beginning presumably the day, the day town meeting adopts it, if they do, and then in that time, under your direction, we're going to do a study of Route 1, Route 1 Carter, and in particular with relation to a lot of vehicle storage.
Okay, yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Anything else on the board? Thank you.
Oh, I thought, on that, you going to take a vote on that?
Yes, if you'd like.
Please.
Thank you. Did I get a second on that, by the way?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous?
One question if I might ask, Mr. Halakiotis. So the only thing we haven't talked about as far as taking position is Number 6, the footnote. Does that stand alone? That's, that doesn't necessarily go with 5. That stands alone based on comments Phil Riley made at our meeting.
That stands alone. At some point in the future, we may want to include the same design standards in the overlay district further along in other commercial districts. But for now, the quick fix was to article, to get rid of that footnote or change the density requirements there.
Again, it's not basically usually our area of interest and expertise, if you will, but both the zoning and Planning Board seem to be in favor of this type of action. So I would make a motion to also support it at town meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to support that article. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? And that concludes our business with the-
It does.
The woman. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Good to see you back in action.
Thank you, sir.
You too. Okay, continuing on with business. Number 2, David Hearn, Town Moderator submitting notice of a schedule of Town Meeting 101 and proposing a date of April 10, 2019, at 7:00 PM at the high school. That's April 10, 7:00 PM at the high school. The Town Meeting 101 is to educate people who have just been elected to town meeting, how the whole system operates, and what they can expect, and answer any questions they may have at that time, before they get into the actual town meeting itself.
Information?
I think the moderator was looking for some input of at least one or two members from the different boards, including the selectmen that he might be able to count on to be there to participate. So do we know if anyone's definitely going? Do we want to appoint someone?
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to do it if no one else wants to do it.
I've already signed up for it. I notified between the two. But we could go.
And then it's just otherwise open for everyone to go, obviously.
Because I believe Mr. Ja would like to go also.
So information filed made in seconds, then, right?
All in favor?
Yep.
All opposed? Unanimous? Okay, let's step on to the letter from Judith Howard and Tony Esco regarding question about the mixed-use overlay district that we just spoke about. That was sent to Mr. Halakiotis, and I don't know if we all have his response, but I think I gave it to you on email, Mr. Ja.
Yep, I just read it.
And we'll make that available to the other members of the board.
So that's information.
Information.
Yep.
Second on that, Mr. Maloney?
Yep, second.
Yep, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, unanimous. Number 4 Cemetery Deeds, we review and signature with the board.
Those to sign.
All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous. Amanda Storth, 301 Buckminster Drive, submitting request that the board proclaim the week of April 8, 2019 as the week of the young child in Norwood.
So moved.
Anybody have any questions on it?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. I looked into this and I think there's two requests that they're asking. One is that they want us to agree to the week, which is not a problem. If you go to NACI's website, it is listed. But they're also asking for proclamation. In nowhere that I find in any of their information do they talk about municipalities or anybody else issuing proclamations. And I'm just, Larry, it came from a neighbor, didn't come from the association itself that would request that. It's coming from an individual. I get concerned if.
I have that same concern. I don't have a lot of information about her herself. Any other comments on the board? Nothing?
For that reason, I'm probably not that crazy about it.
I am not. Would you like to put it off for one week and just look at it?
I don't think you can.
It'll be too late.
Too late, yeah.
I'm personally not in favor of it. No disrespect to the week of the young child, but I don't have enough information to go forward on it myself. I don't have enough information on the person who is requesting it and I can't find a lot either on the internet regarding the week of the young child. Any other motions? Anybody want to make a motion?
I think you have a motion on the floor, actually.
We have a second?
Oh, yeah.
A second is for discussion.
Is it feasible for us to proclaim this and just leave it at that?
I would have a problem with proclaiming it verbally, but I really don't want to get into a proclamation.
No, I agree with that.
The week is, it's a legitimate week sponsored by a national organization, NACI and the association, but it's the proclamation piece that.
I have the same problem with proclamation.
No, 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 no. I'll clarify it then. My motion is to just verbally commit to that and leave it at that.
Okay, all in favor?
If it's committing to just agreeing that the week is.
Correct, just a verbal.
Then that's fine.
Sure.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
So the Board of Selectmen in the town of Norwood will proclaim the week of April 8, 2019 as the week of the young child as requested. Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Number 6, Thomas F. Branley of Forty Marlborough Street, submitting request to place a banner on the poles on Washington Street between Vernon and Day Street highlighting end distracted driving campaign. He does this periodically.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Yes, sir.
I just want to say that I've had contact with Mr. Branley over the years since the tragedy that happened to his daughter on Washington Street. This man is incredible how he's seeking to end distracted driving and I so compliment him on that, that he's a wonderful individual, he really is, how dedicated he is to this and I so support him.
And as I spoke earlier in the evening with Chief Brooks, there is legislation pending to eliminate any cell phone usage other than hands-free. I've gone around town, I've seen too many people with their ear up to the phone, et cetera, et cetera. We all know what I'm talking about. So hopefully our legislature will take care of that and rectify the situation. We have a motion and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Number 7, Paul Sivajadellis, Post 70 American Legion Baseball, requesting to close Day Street from Washington Street to Central Street on Sunday, April 28, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM to hold the third annual Zero K Road Race. This race is sponsored by Napertandis.
My kind of race.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Number 8, Ann Shetwin, Operations Support Services for National Grid. Here we go. It's springtime and it's time to start ripping up the roads. But what the National Grid is proposing and all butters should get some kind of a notice starting last week, actually, they're going to be ripping up some roads. And I'll go through a quick list. 154 to 220 Nickel Street, in the area of 245 Nickel Street, 85 to 90 Bond Street, 94 to 103 Elliott Street, 92 to 102 Rosemary Street, 2 to 12 Shattuck Park Road, 11 to 17 Peabody Road, 32 to 45 Belmont Street, and 17 to 64 Oak Street. There'll be a series of criteria. They're going to start by marking off the road. You may see some pink spray on the roadways, but they're going to dig up and do some work and put it back supposedly the way it's supposed to be. We'll see how that works out.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
There's a lot of people emailed here and I could be missing it, but not jumping out at me that Mr. Ryan, DPW, has a copy of this notice. I think they should. If they haven't, we could forward that to them. In particular, I note that 85 to 90 Bond Street, I didn't have a chance to ride over there and see just what section of Bond Street that is, but on our tentative repayment list, there is a section of Bond Street. Want to make sure they're not the same and we're aware of that.
We do coordinate with National Grid and anyone else that has to do a road. We try to make sure that we are consistent with our pavement management plan. And I mentioned before that sometimes that's actually why a road will get kicked off a plan one year. We'll plan to do a road. If a utility company has to come in and do a certain amount of work, we just say, well, we're going to have to pave it next year. And sometimes instead of doing a full patch, they'll actually give us money towards the repaving of that road that ends up working out better that way.
And we do a better job, by the way.
Just we've had oops where one goes down and immediately thrown up. We don't want that.
At some point in the next few weeks, we're probably going to be bringing your recommendations in the board to look at raising our road opening fees.
And one other article here, too, it's important to note. Feeny Construction, or Feeny Brothers Construction will be doing initial marking out of the road. So you may see Feeny Brothers Construction trucks in the area. But somebody may come at some point in time to shut off your gas and reignite your gas. They will have identification that they are from the National Grid. And if you have any questions at all, you can call the town hall or the local police department if somebody comes to your door. I just want to make sure that everybody knows we intend to keep them safe.
Mr. Chair.
Sir.
Mr. Manager, do you know if any of these were paved last year? Hopefully not.
I'd have to check, but we usually do a pretty good job with National Grid to make sure we coordinate that. Sometimes it doesn't always work out just because there's a change in the infrastructure, but we'll also work with them through rearranging their schedule and make sure the lines are our schedule.
Thank you.
Information to file?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Number 9, Tom Shaki, Vice President of the Norwood Little League, submitting request to hold the annual Little League Parade on Saturday, April 20. Saturday, April 20. This year, they will be joined by the Norwood Girls' Softball League. The parade will leave the Norwood Elks parking lot at 9:30 AM and proceed down Walllet Avenue to Washington Street through South Norwood to the Cokely Middle School, ending up at Kelly Field. The Norwood Little League program would be honored if any of the members of the Board of Selectmen were present for opening day celebrations. They are also requesting a police and fire escort on the parade route. Did you see that that happens also in case they don't already know?
I wish to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. And on that, I intend to try to be there myself, so if anybody would like to join me, feel free. Number 10, Diego Silva, Race Director, submitting request for the fifth annual run for a vet five-mile road race on Saturday, May 11 at 9:30 AM. All pre- and post-race activities will take place at Norwood High School. He has coordinated this event with the Norwood Police Department. This year, they will honor Glenn Blackburn of Dover, who is a Vietnam veteran, a Silver Star winner, as well as a Purple Heart recipient. Information?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Unanimous. Number 11, Sean Wannick, Assistant Director of Information Technology, submitting a request to the board to declare as surplus the attached list of items which are either obsolete or no longer functioning due to irreparable damages. These items include, but not limited to, PCs, monitors, printers, and switches.
Moved to declare these items as recommended and to approve the disposal as recommended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Additional new business. Number 12, Sonia Ramos, General Manager of Jake &amp; Joe's, 475 Boston Province. Requesting request for extended hours from Saturday, April 13 to Sunday, April 14 to show a UFC event which will be held on the West Coast. She requests to stay open until 2:00 AM, which is the same provisions as in the past on several occasions. The back gate will remain closed. They will have a police detail on-site. And if the match is canceled for whatever reason or the event is before normal business hours, then the license for the late closing will be rescinded. We've done this in the past.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. Number 13, Travis Foley, Superintendent of the Norwood Recreation Department, submitting request to place an A-frame sign on the island in front of the high school. This sign will advertise the need for additional seasonal lifeguards for the town of Norwood.
Motion approved.
Second question.
Sir.
I have no problem with this, but Travis might, for safety purposes of having something in the middle of an island, work with the high school and having that message on their electronic board since they're trying to get really kids.
That's a right idea, too.
And then working with the high school, they've had a couple of table days set up there. We're just in a struggle to find lifeguards.
No, I know it is. I know it is. I would just, personally, would rather see it on the electronic board up there rather than adding something else that is going to be in the way. But I have no problem with it.
Thank you for that. So that is information?
Do we approve it?
And we've approved it. And we will move on to Article 40. Thank you, sir. Mary Jo Perry, District 5 Highway Director for MassDOT Department of Transportation, submitting a small bridge inspection report on Westover Parkway slash Germany Brook. This has been sent to Superintendent Mark Ryan. It's for our perusal. Any questions or comments?
Information?
Second.
Just a question because I'm not totally.
On motion.
I know you want to file it, but this requires follow-up. Are we requesting Mr. Ryan to come back and address the deficiencies because they're saying it's in poor condition? So and there's some specifics that.
Most of the bridges in the state are in poor condition. The DPW handles them and it gets added into a work queue if there's items we can do. If we were to fully repair every bridge deficiency in the town, it would be.
Millions.
Yeah. But the DPW does fall off on it. The board says motion filed, DPW is just going to say, okay, bridge report and then, you know, toss it out.
On that topic quickly, if I can, we did a random agreement, if you will, with the asphalt factory on Pleasant Street some time ago. And they will give us a certain amount of money over a certain tonnage. But that money is meant to go through, excuse me, repair of that bridge right there.
It's going to take a while.
It's going to take a while, but at least there's some money coming in for that purpose to offset it. And also to do any kind of asphalting from the Dean Street intersection down further. Just information. So we go to number 14? Information?
Yes.
Number 15, Department of Public Works Summer Jobs Lottery. Applications are available online at www.noredma.gov. That's Norwood MA, one word. Under Employment Opportunities, they are due by Monday, April 29, and the lottery will take place during this Board of Selectmen's meeting on April 30. That's information?
Information. Second.
Okay. Managers update, if you'd like.
Couple of things, Mr. Chairman. We began enhanced patrols on Belwick Place. We have some police there twice a day. We'll continue that daily for the next several weeks and several citations have been issued already. Next Wednesday is Student Government Day, so we hope to see all of you there. We'll begin in Memorial Hall, just as we did last year, and then the various departments will take their students for part of the day and then we'll have our mock town meeting as we did last year where the students will get to appropriate a small budget. We are doing a series of budget presentations this week, this season, I should say, not at all this week. The final schedule, the schedule was set out, we have to make one adjustment to that schedule, but we'll be doing two presentations on the general government budget, including sort of an overview. We'll be doing one on the capital outlet and then the schools are doing the budget here as well as one budget presentation. So we're specifically inviting town meeting members to those, but they're also open to the public and we encourage folks to attend as well, just a chance to learn about the town's budget. We'll continue to do that every year. Next year, it'll be a little bit earlier in the year. There'll also be a municipal finance 101, which we did last year. That'll be happening. We're also doing a town meeting workshop, which is separate from the town meeting 101. The town meeting workshop is really just a review of all the items on the warrant, a chance for people to learn about them, no discussion. We of course want to save the debate for town meeting, as I like to say. And we'll also be doing a two, the Budget Balance Committee is going to be doing two override information sessions. Those will be similar to the one they did in November. Again, we'll get the dates for all those out of the website this week. We just had to make one small change to one of the dates. And this Saturday morning, we have a joint meeting with the Finance Commission and the school committee at the Police Community Room at 9:00 AM. We're looking forward to that as well. We'll be discussing adopting our financial policies as well as a memorandum of understanding as it relates to the June 3 override, a couple other small items of business. And that is all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Selectmen's agenda and I'll start with Mr. Maloney, the honorable Mr. Maloney.
Spodakis. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of things. First of all, I want to thank, I want to thank all of the people who helped me in my recent campaign for reelection. I'm delighted to have been reelected. I enjoyed the first three years on this board. If I hadn't, I wouldn't have run for a second three years. So I got the second three years, I'm sure I'll enjoy that too. But I want to thank all the people who supported me in this campaign, especially those who held signs, did literature distributions, and spoke to their neighbors, and held signs at the polls and all the things that go into the blocking and tackling of a campaign. I had an outstanding team and I want to thank them, beginning with my wife Kathy and my children, John and Laura. Also want to just say a word here, this system of government that came to the shores 400 years ago has been a great boon to this country and its development, its participatory democracy. When the people speak, the leaders obey. In our case, as you know, the composition of this board has changed and that is the will of the people and we accept it. I would like to say a word about my now former colleague Helen Donahue. I would like to say a word about my now former colleague Helen Donahue. I don't think there is anybody alive who cares more about this town, its people, its history, and its overall welfare than she. Her service on this board for 18 years was exemplary, and that was only the capstone of a lifetime of service to this town, which includes serving as a town meeting member for 50 years, a member of the South Norwood Committee, and various other civic activities, duties, and committees to which she was... of which she was a part. So a salute to Helen for having served the community for so long. I know she will stay involved on the civic side. She said so last night, and I know she is a woman of a word, and she will. But it was a pleasure to serve with her. Helen, I hope you're doing well, and your family, too. And also, the people having spoken and the change having been taking place, I want to welcome my new colleague, David Hajar. His bona fides are known to most of you, I think, but for those who don't, I'm sure he'll introduce himself in greater detail in a few minutes. I can simply say that having worked with Mr. Hajar for a number of years in a number of capacities, he is very diligent, highly intelligent, and as you've seen here tonight, he pays attention to detail, and he is going to be a great addition to this board. Finally, just a quick hello to our friend at Norwood Institution, Jack McCarthy, former town moderator, who underwent some surgery this past weekend, is recovering now and doing quite well. Jack, we want to have you back here in town and at NCM as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Mr. Howard, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I likewise would like to talk just a moment about Helen Della Donahue, and her family, for that matter. I grew up in South Norwood with these folks, and actually, her older sister, Alga, and I were classmates, as it happened. And so I've interacted with these people for a long time, very good people, and surely Helen will be missed on the board, but that's the way life is sometimes, and I wish her only well. And in the same tone, I want to welcome Mr. Hajar to the board, and I wish him only success here. So, speaking of medical reports, one of the things I want to do is thank the numerous people who sent get well cards to me, to wish me well, how am I doing, et cetera, et cetera. The deal is, folks, I'm down to one crutch, actually, now. Making progress when I walk without help, that'll only be told, maybe, hopefully, a month or so I'm wishing for. But that's the way that's standing, and just to you folks, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Mr. Plasko.
Thank you. I just want to put a word out once more in a couple of weeks, or is it actually next week now? We're going to be filling some positions that we do annually. We're particularly trying to encourage people to step forward and volunteer and get involved in the community. We definitely have some major boards, like the Zoning Board and the Airport Commission. I think there's still an opening on the current building construction committee and other positions in town that you can get a full list at our office during the daytime, if you want to reach out and see what you might want to offer your services in. So I just want to make one more plea for people to step forward and help us fill these positions. They're important to the town's activities. Like my colleagues, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Hajar on his hard-fought victory. He worked very hard for it, and he's put in a lot of time leading up to this. So, as has been said, I'm sure he's going to be a positive addition to the board. Every time there's a change, there's new chemistry and new ideas come forward, so I'm sure it'll serve the town well. But as my other members said, I also want to acknowledge Helen Donahue and her years of service. She was here for 18 years. I served all those 18 years with her. Found her to be a fantastic colleague. We would fight like cats and dogs, and then the next morning, we would be calling each other to support each other and work on another project, and I think that's how it always should be.